I'd like to call the Thursday, August 1st, 2019 Howell Township Planning Board regular meeting to order. Eileen, please help read the opening statement.
I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be opened at a but notice haven't been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 4th, 2019, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Star Ledger and the Trittown News. Second, on January 4th, 2019, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on January 4th, 2019, said notice was posted in the office of the planning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Would you please call the roll?
Sure. Mr. Boyle?
Here.
Mr. Dorado?
Here.
Mr. Husser?
Here.
Chief Kudrick?
Here.
Mr. Nacastro's been excused. Mr. Schneider's been excused. Mr. Tannenhouse?
Here.
Mr. Seaman?
Here.
Mr. Everett's been excused. Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Here.
Chairman Nash?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. I like this time for everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag and if we could remain standing for a moment of silence for our troops both here and abroad and also our first responders. Chief, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item on our agenda is the review of ordinance O-19-35, land use repeal, Chapter 188-51, entitled Appeals. What we're looking for is if anyone has any comments on this and if not, a motion that it is substantially consistent with the master plan. Basically, the ordinance, the revision, is that currently an applicant that is denied by either the zoning board or this board has the right to appeal to the council within a certain timeframe. And having the council review and possibly overturn our decisions or the zoning board's decision basically is counter to and upsets our authority. All right? So what this is doing is it is not denying someone the ability to appeal the decision, but what it's saying is the next step is to go to the court. And if you think about it, if you go to the council and the council upholds our decision, you're going to court anyhow if you disagree with it. And if the council overturns our decision, then the person who is going to lose out by that is going to be going to court. All right? So really what it's doing is it's taking out that one step which is really of no use because it's going to wind up in court.
Agreed.
So that's the premise for this application. Uh, I'm sorry, ordinance. So if there are any questions or any discussion? If not, can I have a motion that this is substantially compliant with our master plan?
I'll make a motion that the ordinance O-19-35 is compliant with our master plan.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
That was Mr. Boyle.
Mr. Boyle?
Here.
No. Yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
I'm not on this.
No, this is for the ordinance.
Oh, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is memorialization of a resolution that was sent out yesterday about the amendment to the housing element and fair share plan of the municipal master plan. That's what Peter had presented to us at the last meeting. So this is the resolution, adoption, should be adopting?
Yes.
The housing plan, element and fair share plan of the municipal master plan, dated July 3, 2019. Eligible voters: Mr. Boyle, Mr. Dorado, Mr. Tannenhouse, Mr. Seaman, Deputy Mayor O'Donnell, and myself. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to adopt the amendment to the resolution to the amendment to housing element and fair share plan of the municipal master plan.
Second.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Yes.
And Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution's memorialized.
Thank you. All right, next item in front of the board is review of submission waivers. It's case number SP 1041A, Smith Family Properties LLC. It's a submission waiver for preliminary and final major site plan. Application of Smith Family Properties LLC as applicant and owner seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval to remove existing dwellings, sheds, and dirt driveway to retain the existing commercial warehouse building indicated as a glass and aluminum assembly facility and to construct three proposed flex space buildings of 42,500 square feet, each with 175 parking spaces, lighting, and landscape improvements. I cite identification sign, refuse enclosure areas, as well as a four-by-six-foot-high board-on-board fence along the front portion of the southerly side property line on premises known as Block... You want to clue me in here?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman.
Well, we've got to finish reading.
Block 49, Lot 7, 289 Squankum Road.
I'm sorry, could you put that on the record?
Block 49, Lot 7, 289 Squankum Road.
Okay. Just so the council's got to put his appearance on the record.
Mr. Chairman, Frank Akazano, representing the applicant.
Okay, can you hold on one second? This is Tannenhouse. Take a break for a second. Thanks.
That part, I think, is just Squankum.
Yeah, it should be.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay. Eileen, please show the record reflect that Brian Tannenhouse has reclusive himself for this particular application.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to swear in Laura Newman because she's going to be offering testimony on the submission waiver.
Let me just, council. Our normal procedure is on this is that we have our engineer present the submissions, the waivers that are being requested, and we discuss that, and then if there are any questions, obviously, we'll get back to you.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes, familiar with that, Mr. Chairman? Okay, Ms. Newman, do you swear from the testimony provided before to the board this evening will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the submission waivers are specifically listed on page five of our May 24th, 2019 report. I have consulted with the applicant's engineer. They have agreed, and they did submit to me today, Item B, which is the description of operations, products, processes, water consumption, volumes of sewage, and anticipated number of shifts in employees. As it relates to Item 52, which is the use designation of all lots within 200 feet, again, all structures are shown, they didn't indicate the use, they did indicate that they would, on a plan submission, update that. So for the purposes of deeming the application complete, I take no exception to the waiving of checklist Item A and C at this time.
Okay. Does the board have any questions? You're okay with that?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Can I have a motion then, please, approving the requested waivers?
Motion to accept the waiver of submission waivers for case number SP 104A, Smith Family Properties.
Second.
Thank you. Roll. Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Yes.
And Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Our next application is case number...
Oh, here he is. He's right here.
Let the record reflect that Mr. Tannenhouse has rejoined the board. So the next application is case number SP 1009A, Par Golf. It's an application for amended preliminary and final major site plan. It's the application of Par Golf LLC as applicants and owners seeking amended preliminary and final major site plan to consolidate two properties and provide an eight-foot area of right-of-way dedication along the lot 37 site frontage of Asbury Avenue to ensure a 33-foot-wide half-width right-of-way along same. They are also proposing to construct an additional in-ground pool, 24 feet by 50 feet, including a seating area, extension, cabanas, and outdoor kitchen area, including grill and pizza oven amenities east of the existing pool area. An existing tennis court and an accessory shed are to be relocated toward the east to accommodate the proposed expansion pool area, and the existing pool and tennis area perimeter fencing will be relocated on premises known as Block 185, Lots 37, and 40.01. The address is 20 Shore Oaks Drive. This application was originally scheduled to be heard on July 18 when it was carried to August 1, 2019, with no further notice.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Frank Akazano appearing on behalf of the applicant. I'm Todd Cohen for this evening, so...
Yeah, what happened to Todd?
He had an engagement in Chicago, so he saw that I had one on first, and he called me and said, "Cover this," so I said yes.
Okay. All right, on this one, I'm going to ask you to put your witnesses on.
Okay, I have two witnesses. Richard DeFalco, our engineer, and Joseph Callahan, who's our attorney.
I guess we'll swear you both in simultaneously. Do you gentlemen both swear or affirm that the testimony provided before the board this evening will be the truth?
Yes.
And can you please state your name and business addresses for the record?
Richard DeFalco, licensed engineer and planner, JKR Engineering, 49 Nemoco Road, Frehhold Township, New Jersey.
Joseph Callahan, general manager, Eagle Oaks Golf Club, 20 Shore Oaks Drive, Farmingdale, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Would you please qualify, Mr. DeFalco?
Mr. DeFalco, would you please put aboard the benefit of your education, your licensure, and your experience?
Yes, sir. I have graduated from Rutgers University, licensed in the state of New Jersey as a planner and engineer since 1977 as an engineer. I've been doing engineering 40-plus years. I own JKR Engineering. I appear before this board and also the zoning board in other Monmouth County and Ocean County towns. Pretty much, I do private work, not public work, and I do site plan subdivisions, very familiar with the site. I've been their engineer for 20 years, maybe.
Mr. DeFalco, is your licensed, your professional engineer's license current with the state board?
It is, yes, sir.
And have you had any actions or are there any pending actions in front of the board? All right, we'll accept your qualifying as a professional engineer, civil engineer.
And planner.
Okay. Same questions, the planner's license, your current?
Current.
And no action?
And second question, no.
Okay. We'll accept Mr. DeFalco as a professional engineer and a professional planner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I'd offer Mr. DeFalco's testimony in a narrative form, let him address what it is that we're doing, and entertain questions from the board and staff.
So there's two aspects of the site plan. The first aspect is that the club is desirous of building a second pool, and Mr. Callahan can explain the reasons why, but primarily it's to have an area where the adults can use the pool without the children in the same pool, although there's families and that's a common occurrence, but they want a separate area as well as what they have today, which is a nice setup there. In doing so, there are three tennis courts adjacent to the pool, and they want to keep three tennis courts. So what they have decided to do is to, in place of the one tennis court adjacent to the pool, to make that the new pool location, and then add a third tennis court on the opposite side. So there's still three tennis courts, but in place of the first court, there will be an in-ground swimming pool. In addition to the pool and tennis court construction, there's a proposal to place an outdoor kitchen for service to the members and their guests who attend the pool area. Part of the application also includes the removal of a lot line which is common to Lot Number 37 of Block 185. That lot was purchased by the club about a year ago, and it is surrounded on all sides by the golf course club. So by eliminating that lot line which separated that parcel from the club's boundary, it will then be absorbed or consolidated into the overall golf course property. And it's about...
Can you hold on one second? I just wanted to verify the size of that lot.
That lot is 1.5 acres in size. It has frontage on Asbury Road, and part of the county's requirements was to provide an adequate right-of-way width, so we have dedicated a strip of land along Asbury Road, Asbury Avenue, to the county. But that's, in essence, the application, elimination of that common lot line, and to build a pool where a tennis court is and move another tennis court to the side.
So, again, bear with my ignorance, I assume that irregular shape within the brick-paved areas that's to the west?
That's the existing pool.
The existing pool.
Yes.
All right. So what you're saying is you're going to take the first tennis court directly to the east of the clubhouse building and essentially flip that over onto the new property that you're now consolidating.
Right, it's partly onto that property. And what happens, too, is that there is a storm drain line which is within an easement that hugs the property boundary, and we're proposing, rather than piping that under the tennis court, we're going to abandon that line and reconstruct it outside of the tennis court within a new easement to continue the flow of water from Shore Oaks Drive into the golf course property. That pipe eventually winds up in the irrigation pond and is used and sprayed back onto the course, but the relocation is required. There'll be a new easement and a new pipe installed.
All right, any questions? Board have any questions?
Kind of food's going to be served at that outdoor kitchen.
By the way, Mr. DeFalco, the kitchen exists now, does it not? We're just adding a pizza oven.
We're adding to it, and we're adding some more of the canopy areas for shade. It's pretty much the same setup, but it'll be slightly expanded for service, and some more shaded areas for those cabanas will be added along the side of the property there, around the new pool.
Do we don't require any variances for the approval we're seeking, do we?
There's one mentioned in Ms. Newman's letter or is in the planner's letter. They talk about parking, is that a variance or waiver, I'm not sure, but I'll talk about that. Want to go through the letters? We can do that quickly.
Well, yeah, I was going to say, if we could go through...
Yeah, go through the letter.
Peter, did you do a letter on this?
I did, yeah. Do you have it there?
No, I don't.
I have it.
If we could start on page four of Ms. Newman's letter, May 28, 2019, letter?
I got it.
Just prior to that is where we talk about the design waiver for the number of parking spaces. So ultimately, for a club pool, technically 6.5 parking spaces are required per 1,000 square feet of area. The pool would be replacing the tennis court, but the tennis court would then be displaced. The tennis court requires three spaces per court. So what the applicant is, the applicant is not providing any additional parking on the site. They're saying there's no change in membership to the club, therefore, no additional spots are warranted.
So you want to...
I want to just expand upon that. So she's right in the fact that there's no new members being added for this change in membership. However, the use of the pool, as we know, is seasonal, and it's a daytime use. And the club also has a banquet facility and a large room and sufficient parking for a full banquet to take place, which far exceeds what would happen at the pool. Those banquet uses are primarily at night and not during the week, and we think that the sharing of parking on this site is appropriate, that we have an abundance of parking for the few spaces that we may be short, to be absorbed in that banquet parking that's not really being used.
So the shared parking would mitigate the increase in parking demand?
I believe so, yes. That's our presentation on that parking issue. And it's also seasonal. It's only four, five months of the year. The rest of the year, we're not using the pool. And the tennis court, although it may be used, is very low usage.
So can we go to Ms. Newman's letter?
All right, page four. So Item D we just spoke about? Are we on the same page? Top of the page, Item D?
No, I was...
Rich, I think he's on page four, the discussion items.
I'm on Peter's letter. Hold on. Yeah.
Start with 5A.
That's Peter's letter. The same thing I... All right. Page four, 5A. Compliance with conditions of approval. I don't believe there's any outstanding conditions of the other approvals we've received. The last application was for the range building upgrade, and prior to that was the clubhouse addition, and those two, I believe, have been CO'd and are done. Mr. Callahan will address the operations under 5B. As opposed to me. Hours of operation, site circulation and traffic will remain the same. Refuse and recycling remains the same. Buffering and screening. An abundance of landscaping exists at the golf course. That's one of their main aesthetic features is their abundance of landscaping, so there's no shortage of buffering.
Where are the cabanas?
The cabanas are shown. Those are those squares that are around the new pool. They have like an X in the center of them, and they're at the end, the edges of the patio. Do you see them there?
Cross-hatched area.
They're lined up along the top of...
The top.
So what, nine on the top and then four on the east edge?
That's correct.
So, I'm sorry if I'm being stupid here, all right? It's kind of weak for me. The irregular shape that is, like I said, to the west of the building, the existing building, that's the existing pool?
Correct.
Okay. Where's the proposed second pool?
Right here.
The rectangle right to the right of it.
Oh, I was interpreting that as a building.
That's the golf, that's the golf course right now.
That's tennis court. Okay.
So it shows the seating, and at the top of it, there's a spa which has a little change in grade, and the water falls into the pool from the spa. Seating area.
Okay.
The cabanas would be a temporary seasonal use and not a year-round use. Yeah, there's already eight cabanas at the existing pool. I don't believe we need an architect, so they're stock items, they just have a canvas, canvas top, 10 by 10. It provides shade. And they're anchored to the ground, so the wind won't pick them up. But we'd have wind in Howell, right? All right, so I think that's page four. Mr. Callahan will address part of 5B. Also, date, operations of the kitchen and grill, employees, that's Mr. Callahan. Existing and proposed lighting. There will be, pretty much, when it gets dark, this place shuts down.
So there's no nighttime?
No night light out. Close at 7 o'clock.
There goes our pool party.
And no lighting at the tennis court. And there's no lighting at the tennis court. That was a condition of the original approval, which we continue to maintain. That was a condition of the original approval, which we continue to maintain. The site improvements on lot 37, which is the 1.5 acre parcel that is being consolidated, those improvements will remain on site. And one thing we'll talk about is presently that, that has an existing lease to rent the building, which is intact until the end of this fiscal year. And what the applicant is seeking, that if the board favorably approves the application, he would, they would like to start the pool improvements and tennis improvements, but hold off on the consolidation until that lot line, keep that lot line intact until the lease is over. And then, once the lease ends, it'll be absorbed into the golf course, it'll be vacated by the person who's in it without the issue of the lot being not there anymore.
In that regard, the members of the board, the applicant's willing to accept the condition and any approval that no CO would be issued for the improvements that we're talking about tonight until the lots are consolidated. And that would be in January 2020.
Okay. Steve, you noted that?
Under item G, the refuse management, I don't believe there'll be need for additional trash receptacles other than the ones that are placed there. And those are collected by staff with the, the larger golf cart, little truck, they take them to the main recycling area, which is behind the parking lot in front of the clubhouse. The depth of the pool and seating area should be verified.
Laura, was there a question about that?
We just said that they should clarify what it is. You'll see the wall areas in there, that's what goes to the next, the detail of either amenity and/or the associated walls around the pool.
So both areas are four feet, four feet deep. There's no deep areas beyond four feet. And there is a retaining wall, landscape wall, which exists today, which will extend through the site. That wall is where the stairs are. And the same construction will take place with that new extension of the wall and another set of steps to get up around the other side of the new pool. But I can verify that with Ms. Newman on the actual elevations if that's needed.
As it relates to drainage, other than the relocation, there's no new drainage proposed?
No, well, there is the new drainage and then there's no additional drainage beyond the relocation of that pipe. So we're connecting to the existing drain and we're starting at the existing drain and just eliminating the middle piece. And while there is a new tennis court being constructed, where now it's grass, the, the amount of new runoff, I believe, is insignificant compared to the 200 acre lot we have here and the large pond, which is in need of as much water as we can take for irrigation. All that water is put back on the golf course.
Just out of curiosity, what is the increase in the impervious area?
Tennis court is probably 60 by 120 plus the fringe, maybe it's eight, nine, 10,000 square feet, quarter acre or less.
And your existing inlets are going to accommodate that?
Yes, they will. The, the actual construction is proposed during, as we mentioned, during the wintertime. We'd like to get approval to do that when it's not pool season or tennis season and be done by the spring, so there won't be any interruption of activity at that facility. That's the goal.
The pool's going to be, I'm assuming Memorial Day to Labor Day, it's going to be open, right?
I'm sorry?
The pool's just going to be open from Memorial Day to Labor Day?
Yes, we close right after Labor Day.
And the item K, the need for improvements, curb sidewalks, street trees along either Shore Oaks Drive and/or Asbury Avenue.
Well, again, you're not proposing anything beyond the dedication that was required by the county, correct?
Not with this application, that's correct.
As it relates, as it relates to the items contained in number six, do you agree to comply with those comments?
Yes, we do. Number seven is the outside agencies.
Yeah, we'll just make that a condition of the...
We haven't seen the police or the environmental or shade tree letters, so I hate to say, yeah, we agree with them if there's something in them that we don't, but typically...
They were sent out to Todd.
They were?
Nick, was this in front of the commission? So there's, the police is saying no issue.
Okay, we agree with that.
The environmental commission liaison is saying no issue.
Okay.
All right. Our certified tree experts not yet tonight, so...
He's not here tonight because there's no removal associated with the application. A woodland's management approval is not required.
And, okay, it's not required.
I wouldn't think FAR would have an issue since it's just a pool and a tennis court.
There were no reports, other than the Board of Health had a question on or comment, that the plans for the new swimming pool must be approved by this department prior to building permits being issued, and the plans for the outdoor grill must be approved by this department prior to building permits being issued.
Yes, we, that standard, we agree with that, that's...
All the other reports were no comment.
Great, that was easy then. Mr. Callahan, I guess?
Well, do you want to handle?
Oh, the planning letter.
Yes.
Here's a separate letter. All right.
And let the record show that this is marked as B11 and it's Mr. Van Cooy's July 15, 2019 letter.
Yeah. If it, if it helps in terms of expediency, I, I think on page three, item six, A, B, and C, they were either addressed or they'll be addressed by the next witness. And then, item D on page four was addressed. So item E on page four would be the first one, if that helps.
Yes, it does.
All right, so item E, provide a construction detail for the kitchen and landscape walls, and we will provide that detail.
Okay.
Item F, any landscape modifications? Once the two stabilized entrance pads are removed. So what happens now is there is a landscape planting, pretty dense planting along Shore Oaks Drive between the tennis courts and the roadway. And the construction access to the pool and the tennis court will be from Shore Oaks Drive, so we will cut through that buffer and put a driveway, temporary. And then, when the driveway is removed, we'll replant the same buffer back. Maybe, you know, the same exact tree if they do it right, they'll put them back in.
Just a little bit smaller, though.
No, they'll, they'll dig them out and they'll put them back.
Oh, you're going to try to save these trees?
They'll haul them and they store them and they'll put them right back in the spot where they were.
Okay.
You wouldn't even know it was there when they're done.
So that'll be a condition of the approval?
Right, the landscaping will be replaced in kind. And actually extended to include now the third tennis court. So that same treatment will follow down the road to cover the third tennis court.
At 6G, we've already addressed...
6G, we talked about no lights.
Yeah.
H, when the properties are consolidated, discuss the current and proposed use of the structure.
I believe that was addressed as well.
We talked about that.
One, one quick question to tack on to that. Seeing as the, it's, it's going to be a vacated structure, it has a pool, is that property going to be maintained by your, your staff?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And the, the remaining comments, I think, are non-substantive, so I think that's it.
We will file the map, tree expert comments, board engineer and outside, yes, I agree. So I think we've addressed your letter as well.
Thank you.
Here now, Mr. Callahan, can you talk about operations briefly?
Yeah, exactly. I don't know where you want me to begin with it. Basically, the operation's going to remain the same. We will have the two pools, one is being created for, so I have access for my adults that can use the pool, whether to work out, to do laps, and just enjoy the pool a little bit more. Right now, the one pool is used by both my adults and the children, so it gets a little crowded. We're just looking to kind of accommodate, you know, the current people that are using the pool. We will probably will have one more lifeguard doing the fact that we have two pools. The one pool is busy, so it requires me to have two lifeguards overlapping so that I have proper attention to the pool. As far as my staff that are currently there, I'm not going to look to increase that because I have enough coverage, you know, cleaning the pool, towels, et cetera. So we're maintaining the same. The kitchen is basically designed now with a grill, a salad station. We make salads, burgers, sandwiches, and, which is currently approved by the Board of Health at the beginning of the year, they come back out at the end of the year also to check the procedure. We do have an application with the township as far as our food handler's license, so that's all intact as well. We're really just looking to add maybe a small pizza area because the kids like pizza as well as chicken fingers and fries. So instead of running back to the clubhouse to get pizza, we can kind of accommodate instead of running back and forth. You know, I don't know the parking, which to address, so that's taken care of. The garbage sanitation, you know, we have seven garbage cans currently around the pool, which get checked twice a day. When they're done at the end, we put them in the back of a carryall, we bring it back to our dumpster area, which is currently there, we dispose of all the garbage. So that's clean and taken care of each night. Current restroom facilities are the same, you know, so there is adequate facilities, which are in the Savannah House, which is right next to the pool. So there's adequate facilities for all the bathers, you know, people that are using the pool. If I can answer any other questions, please, please feel free.
I just want to ask, Ms. Newman, they're not doing any widening on Asbury, they're only giving the, the dedication, correct? What's on, is it curved section on either side, north and south of it, or it's just edge of pavement?
On Asbury, along that property, it's just, yeah, there's no curving. No, no.
Would have any questions?
Not on.
Nope.
All right, I mean, this is a formality I have to do.
Understood.
If there's anyone in this huge crowd of public that we have here, I will close the public portion session of this meeting. All right. Do we have a consensus? Do we have a motion here?
I'll make a motion to approve case number SP 1009A for amended preliminary and final major site plan.
Well, second.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Appreciate it, Rich. Thank you.
Chief, you said you wanted to go into, in fact, in a second. That issue's since been resolved, Mr. Chairman.
May 15, 2020.
Mr. Tannenhouse, any thing you want to say on the master plan subcommittee?
Uh, no, not at this point. Are we having a master plan committee meeting this month? Because I'm on vacation.
Peter, where do we stand? I, I know you and I talked about this a while ago. Have we got any feedback yet from the township on the Route 33 rezonings?
We have. I actually had a meeting yesterday at the, at the township during the day with staff. We went through the report. There's still a handful of things that we're looking at, particularly the Freewood Acres area. There's, there's some moving parts there, but I'm expecting some additional comments within the next week or so. And then, we're going to incorporate those and, and move forward from there. So we're, we're making progress.
So is there any push to have that approved by the board? Or can it wait till the September master plan subcommittee meeting and then after that, present to the board in October?
Um, I, I haven't heard of any exact, like, like, meeting timeframe or, or project schedule, other than, I mean, we want to get it done sooner than later, of course, but no particular dates. So it, you know, I would, I could reach out to township staff just to see if that's, you know, if, if there is such a, a date or, or, you know, project schedule and, and circle back to you, if, if that would work.
Yeah, because what I'm trying to determine, if there's any reason to have a August masters, master plan subcommittee meeting.
Okay, right.
That's after our next meeting, so we could actually decide at that meeting. Our next meeting's August 15.
August 15, yeah.
And master plan meeting's after that.
Okay. If you could have that information, please, for the 15th.
Absolutely.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, I have a, a schedule conflict, so I will not be at the August 15th meeting.
Well, okay, guys, we're going to, are we, no, he, he has the gun, so he gets... Do we have, are we going to have a call-in on August 15th? You'll be here.
It's my 40th birthday, so I will not be here.
So you're no?
I'll be out of state.
You're no?
I am available.
Yes.
All right, so it's one, two, three, four.
Snyder and Nacaster.
And Mr. Everett.
No, Nacaster won't be here. It's Gil Petroleum, right?
No, it's KHAV and MCK, which are both Sal's cases, so Nacaster will have to recuse himself. So Snyder's the only other one available, and Everett, and I don't know if he's available or not. I will check with them.
Yeah, if you can check with them, do we have, are we good on time on those two applications?
Give me one second. Sal gave us an extension of time on KHAV until September 15, but September 5 would be our next meeting and Gil Petroleum's on that one. And MCK expires September 2, so that would be before the next meeting. And we still have quite a few cases coming up.
So we, we have to have a meeting on the 15th?
If at all possible. Because we have Gil Petroleum on the 5th, we have September 19, so our next one will mom with commerce.
I could be here by 8:30. That, that won't help you.
I don't know.
Start the meeting.
I don't know that it matters at all, but for September 5, I know I will not be able to be here.
That's the fourth meeting I've missed in like two and a half years, so...
You're good for September 5?
Yes, I'm good for September 5.
You're good, deputy?
I'm fine, yes.
Everybody on this side's good for the 5th?
If they control that night or agenda is like blown out. Because you've got three, there's three submission waivers on the 15th, so it will be deemed complete and have to be heard. You've got DNR, you've got Tesla, and you've got Arnold.
Um, yeah. All right, so I leave, you have to...
After the meeting.
I mean, Steve, can we, if we only have one, two, three, four members?
I think you need five for four.
You need five, huh?
The alternates count if you can get them.
All right, well...
I'll, I'll call them tomorrow and tell them I need them for the...
And, and let me know.
Because my only concern is, right now, the schedule is booked to September, and at our next meeting on the 15th, there's three submission waiver hearings. If they're deemed complete... If they're deemed complete, they have to be heard within 45 days. So like, our agendas are gonna be packed.
Commerce Center's gonna be mid-September. We're not gonna finish.
No, and if I have to, I'm putting a smaller case before it because we gotta move our agenda.
Yeah.
Well, it sounds like we're gonna have a couple late nights.
All right, so let me know about Mr. Snyder and Mr. Everett.
I'll call them tomorrow.
All right. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Who will be the one?
I don't even know who said that, so... Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we're adjourned.